Is this following the same agenda?
This is following the same agenda.
Okay, because I don't have... Are we at the end yet? Gretchen, are we on the end? Can you tell?
I would assume so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's for the ZBAA.
Oh, I do need one.
It should've been in the same pile.
I got it.
Or at least mine were together.
Just go ahead and do it.
And just say what time it is.
It's a lot?
It's an hour off.
Hi, this is a New Market Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, March 20th. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01, and I would like to first do a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two new board members. One is Jamie Burton.
Burton.
Burton, Burton, and one is Sarah Finch. We'd like to welcome you. And we have a new alternate named Dan. I'd like to welcome you too. I don't know if anyone else has ever... One is Bill Dusset. He's a new alternate also, and McCall's been with us.
Yes.
Yes. And Gretchen's filling in for Amy tonight.
Correct.
Yep. And I will also, at this time, like to thank Roseanne Quacks and Peter Nelson for serving on the planning board for all these years. They've been both very beneficial to us and will be... I'm sure they'll be putting advice sooner or later on things. But I do want to welcome you and try to bear with me. Okay, so tonight, I have to point some alternates to fill in for Eric Bartman and Val Sheldon. Both of them are excused.
And Jane Ford.
Jane Ford's not here. Okay, so I can appoint all three alternates. Bill Dusset, McCall, and Dan. You'll all be filling in tonight, okay? Thank you very much, Val Sheldon. Did I say Dan?
Dan, right. I thought you said Dana.
No, Dane. Dan.
Could be.
So thank you all for coming in tonight. You never know when we need you. Any public comments tonight that's not on the agenda? Someone can speak now? No? Okay. We have some changes to the agenda, and I'm going to say them first in case you're sitting out in the audience. To speak to one of these, you won't have to stay around, unless you want to stay around anyways. The Rockingham Ballroom, the next church, next level church, that application has been withdrawn permanently. So if anyone's... If you were here for that issue, you don't...
I did see that.
Yeah. Yeah, that came after the agenda, I believe, was put up, the original one. Alex Capon and Kathleen West, the continuation request for waiver of their impact fees for the apartment. That has been withdrawn for... The continuation has been withdrawn because they had paid the impact fees. Okay? Let's see. Brand Development.
These are the continuations.
These are still all continuations.
No, these are continuations. The others were withdrawals.
Yeah, the others were withdrawals. Now, these are the continuations. Brand Develop... Brand Development, continuation of a public hearing for an application for subdivision at 1020 Spring Street, tax map U2, Lot 71, M2 zone. The proposal is to convert the six existing apartments, units into condominiums, and that is going to be continued to May 8th meeting. Go ahead, Diane.
Why don't we ask for a motion to grant the continuation a second and approval of the motion to continue it to the May 8th meeting?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to do this one next? Just do this one? The Maplewood?
Maplewood.
Yep. The Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company, LLC, continuation of a public hearing for an application for site plan at 177 Exeter Road, tax map R3, Lot 7, B2 zone. The proposal is for 24,000 square feet standalone industrial building with municipal water and surge. The application previously approved would not be constructed. The full application may be viewed at the planning office at the Town Hall at 186 Main Street, New Market during business hour. This was continued at the last meeting as there were questions regarding the surge design, construction phase stabilization of site, stormwater investing. The TIC committee has met, and these issues have been addressed. At the request of the applicant, this is being continued until the April 10th, 2018 Planning Board meeting. And we need a motion to grant the continuation and a second to... For the... And the approval to continue to the April 10th meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make such a motion.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you have any questions, please feel free, the new ones, to ask, okay?
We already did Brand.
Yep.
So the next one is Zion Hill.
Number five is done too, Brand Development, 1020 Spring Street, yeah. Zion Hill. Zion Hill Public Hearing for Site Plan at 5 Greenwich Street, tax map U2, Lot 5, M2 zone. The proposal is for a change of use within the M2 zone to utilize the second floor of the stone church currently used for storage as a multifunction room. This has been a request that has been continued to the... There has been a request for this to be continued to the April 10th, 2018 meeting. A motion is needed to grant the continuation and a second and approval for the April 10th. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Jay... No, Jay.
Sarah.
Sarah.
Sarah, sorry, I'll get you. Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that... The stone... I call it the stone church for the people out there looking. That would be, again, on April 10th.
Correct. I'm going to roll here.
I'm going to roll.
Do you want to go on to the approval of the minutes?
Yes. Review, approval of the minutes for February 13th, 2018. Do we have enough people who are here who...
Yeah.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes? See, abstaining would be Bill, Dan, Jamie.
And Sarah.
And Sarah. Was I... Was I there?
I don't know.
Wait one second, which one was it? McCall wasn't here, but Gretchen, you were here.
I was there.
Yeah, so we have just two.
Are we allowed?
I think we have to wait until...
We weren't sworn in at the time.
You were not sworn in, so you're not... You weren't officially members.
So I need a...
So I guess we need to continue into the next meeting.
Yep. So we'll continue the meeting, the minutes for February 13th for our March meeting. No, this is March, no. April meet, April 10th meeting. Okay, I don't need a motion to do the minutes, do I?
Just to continue.
Just to continue, okay. Agenda three, regular business. DIA LUMIA, merger of lot lines Grape Street, tax map U2, lots 206 and 2061. And Diane's going to give us a background and some staff recommendations for that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Bill. I hope he can get back in. We'll let him in.
He'll let him in. He's a gatekeeper.
This is the Fourplex project that was approved by the planning board for the Grape Street area. There's a back lot on Grape Street on the... In the New Village area. And actually, it came to the planning board, it was denied, and then it was appealed to the Superior Court, and then it was ultimately the Town and Planning Board won the lawsuit, and it was re-submitted to the planning board last year. A new developer has acquired the property, and they're moving forward with the same concept. And the planning board did approve the project. There was some concerns about the aesthetics and how the new construction would tie into the historic character of New Village. And the technical review committee spent a lot of time reviewing this, and finally, they were able to come to an agreement with the applicant, which moved the process along. One of the conditions on the planning board approval for that project was that there be a merger of two lots. If you look at the town's tax maps right now, there's a lot that's adjacent to the primary lot that's identified as Lot 206, that it's not labeled as part of the lot or not. So there's a provision in New Hampshire state law where somebody can come in and ask for two lots that are owned continuously to merge them, and it's a fairly simple kind of a perfunctory thing where you file a document with the registry of deeds and you put in the deed references, and it comes to the planning board. And the planning board typically approves these in one meeting, and it's done as a... So that there's authorization for the chairman to sign the deed documents so it can be recorded. So this will fulfill one of the planning board's conditions. And by the way, construction has started at that site, so it's moving forward. They're actually applied for the building permit. So with that, I would recommend that the board vote to authorize the chair this evening and remember to sign the document, Janice.
Okay.
If they approve it, so that it can be recorded in fulfillment of the planning board's conditions.
Okay. Does anyone need any further discussion of that? Are you kind of clear?
No.
It's okay, you took it well, too.
I had a question. Diane, well, under what... Where's the provision to allow merging?
It's in the RSA's.
It's in RSA's.
If you'd like me to get that out for you to review, I think Sue mentioned... It's Sue's form that is used. The RSA that it comes in under is... See if I can find it here. RSA 6439A. And if you'd like to look that up and review it, or if you'd like me to review it with you, I'd be happy to.
No, it's okay. I just didn't remember where you said it was under. So just one question. What are they using these lots for?
It's being developed into a four-unit sort of townhouse, upstairs, downstairs, multifamily, commercial... Well, I think it's proposed for condominiums at this point.
Okay.
It's for multifamily housing. Of course, in the New Village area, we have sort of a mixture of land uses from single-family to duplexes, but there are quite a few multifamily housing units. So the planning board, in the zoning board, it also had to go to the zoning board of adjustment, and that decision was appealed as well and was supported by the courts because of the character of the New Village area.
What is it being used for now?
It's just a vacant lot. And it's sort of this... I call it a pork chop-shaped lot because it doesn't have full frontage on a public street. It's sort of... They call them "flag lots," is another term for it. But right now, there's some garage structures on the lot, and I think they've been rented out by the former owner for several years and for storage and that sort of thing. But it's really... It's... We kind of view it as infill development, and this is an opportunity to provide development within already density-populated areas so that we're not encouraging sprawl and development in the outskirts. It could, you know, result in premature or scattered development, as they call it. So, anyway. There's a long history behind the project, and if you'd like me to fill you in someday and you want to stop by, I'd be more than happy to give you the Reader's Digest version of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is an AOT permit required, or...
It's under 100,000 square feet. And AOT for the new members is a New Hampshire DES process for alteration of terrain, and they look at stormwater and make sure that there's proper handling of stormwater on site and to promote water quality enhancement.
Can you recap why this was required by the planning board?
Because it's a lot that didn't have any label on our tax map, so it's really to correct a deficiency in the town's tax map. And it should've been labeled as, but it never happened. And for this project, there's two lots side by side that need to be merged and joined in order to make this development project work from the planning and practical standpoint. Thanks. Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, then I would need a motion to... For the chairperson tonight to sign the merger. So I need someone to make that first motion, and then someone to second it.
So the motion is to approve?
So I can sign the waiver. To authorize the sitting chair to sign the...
Okay. I want to make a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in...
Yeah.
In agreement?
Don't fight over it, yeah.
All those in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. So it's a unanimous vote. And before I move on, why don't you sign the document so we can get it?
So I don't pass out? Okay. I can't see. I'm sorry.
All right, that doesn't... It's right down here. Planning Board's Designee.
Okay.
So you would sign your name there for today's date. And the planning board record will reflect that you've been authorized to sign. Today's the 20th. Okay.
That's it. No, I'm not contagious, guys. That much I know. I went to the doctors today. I'm not contagious.
Thank you, Janice, and thank you, board members. And we'll get that recorded.
Okay. Can you have Mr. Dusset, if he's out there?
We don't want to forget about him. See, the door opened. Yay! Okay, where are we?
We're going to move... I'm going to move this one.
Why don't you ask them to move that to the end, so we have a public hearing.
I have a... I'd like the board... First of all, the next on the agenda would have been Jonathan Smith and Caitlin Smith, a continuation of a request for a waiver of impact fees for an accessory apartment at 14 Woods Drive, tax map U1, Lot 150, R2 zone. I'd like to have the board... Would the board object if we move this to later on on the agenda until after the public hearing on the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the accessory apartments language?
No problem, sir.
Okay, do I need a motion for that, Diane, to be safe?
I think I heard unanimously that...
I did, but do you want to... Do you need a motion to be safe?
Yeah.
Let's do a motion to be safe. Do I have a motion? Does I have a motion? Just to move it down?
Make a motion.
Okay, a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doing great, Janice. So now, we open up the public hearing, so if you wanted to read...
What's this? Do I go?
That's been withdrawn.
That's been withdrawn, yeah.
The continuations have all been approved. We're going to continue that after this.
Okay.
So if you want to...
Okay, for the public hearing, okay. No, ignore it. There's going to be a public hearing to amend Chapter 32 zoning of the municipal code of the town of New Market, New Hampshire in accordance with RSA 6752, RSA 6756, and RSA 6757. The purpose of this amendment is to add a new section to Section 238, impact fees, paragraph F titled "Waivers", to provide the option to the planning board to waive impact fees for proposed... Excuse me, for a proposed accessory dwelling unit, which does not increase the total number of bedrooms on the property. And we're going to open this for a public hearing, and Diane can give us background and review changes.
Yes. As some of you, or most of you know, the town charges impact fees to new development, and an impact fee is allowed under state law to provide financial opportunity for the town to allow for growth. And we've had impact fees here in New Market since 2001. And over the years, we have collected quite a bit of revenue in four categories to provide expansion of town facilities. And this includes schools, recreational facilities, and our water and sewer system. And in the town zoning ordinance, there's a section on how we administer the impact fee ordinance, and there is a section that provides for waivers. And recently, the planning board made some modifications to our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and that was in response to some changes at the state level, which basically, the state passed a law saying that municipalities have to provide an opportunity in their residential zones to allow for accessory apartments. And these are small units that, you know, can be used for as a mother-in-law's apartment or for a young family member, what have you. But we do have a provision in our ordinance for where we will allow accessory apartments by special exception, which is granted by the zoning board of adjustment. And there are several conditions that have to be met before the zoning board can grant them. And I don't want to mention all the details, and I have to sit down and go over what that criteria is and acquaint the new board members with this. But over the years, since I've been here, repeatedly, the planning board has waived impact fees on accessory apartments because it was viewed that they didn't provide or create demand for municipal services as, say, you know, a four-bedroom, single-family home or multifamily housing. And I think... I can't think of a situation, maybe one, where a request for a special... For a waiver for impact fees for accessory unit was not approved. And so recently, the question came up because of the new state law, whether we can restrict impact fees or we can restrict property owners from having school-aged children in their homes. And I think clearly the answer is no, you can't do that because that's discriminatory against families. And so the question was asked, you know, is this policy... In the past, if somebody would come in and say, "Well, it's not going to be any school-aged kids here," then the board was, you know, inclined to say, "Okay, well, there's not going to be an increase in demand." And so we were challenged. And we did actually have the town attorney provide us with legal opinion. And he said, "You know, you're really treading on thin ice here, and this is kind of..." Were you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. If you need to leave.
I have to leave, I have coffee to spill.
Go ahead, sure. So let me continue. I know that is... So anyway, the town legal counsel said, "You have to be really careful. You can't restrict... Or you can't provide waivers on your dwellings on the basis of whether people have school-aged children. And you can't discriminate on the basis of age either." You know, some of the people coming and saying, "Gee, you know, I'm over 55, and I'm not going to have any kids, blah, 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 so therefore, I'm not going to put any impact on the town services, so I should be exempt." Well, that, again, violates... Attorney felt that that was treading on thin ice that we were... That that really wasn't appropriate. So anyway, we started talking about, well, okay, well, how can we structure maybe this waiver section in our ordinance to allow an opportunity where there's not going to be an increase in the number of bedrooms? And Val Sheldon, one of our board members, drafted some language, which is actually before you this evening for the public hearing. And we have reviewed this with legal counsel. He actually recommended that we base it not on age or the number of children, but that we base it on number of bedrooms. Because bedrooms are really what drives the demand for additional municipal services. Does that really... Does that explain it? Okay, but... So anyway, the proposed language for which we have the public hearing this evening is to add a new section to the waiver section in our impact fee ordinance, paragraph F, and indicate in that section that the planning board may waive impact fees where it finds that a proposed dwelling unit meets the following criteria. And the first is that it's being created from the conversion of an existing finished living area. And the second condition, that it will not increase the number of bedrooms on the property, where it finds that it's the ADU, the accessory dwelling, is actually replacing existing space. And it was also clarified in the language that a proposed studio apartment is considered a one-bedroom. And our legal counsel felt that this would muster the test and would be on solid legal ground if we approached it on this, in this fashion, and that we documented as part of our review process. And that would mean submitting plans from the accessories office to show what the existing finished space is, and then future building plans are showing that the existing space is going to be utilized and that it's not going to increase the number of bedrooms and thus the impacts to schools or the ancient and water and sewer facilities. So does that make sense? Did I explain that well enough? Okay. And Janice is back. Okay, so that's the gist of it. And when Janice gets back up, we can open it up for public comment. Perhaps we have some comments from our sole member, the public who's here this evening, joining us. So would you like to open up the public hearing?
Sure. I'll open up the public hearing. You have any comments?
I don't, actually.
No? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You already gave us the background. What are the wishes of the board? Do you want to forward this to the town council for consideration or continue into discussion to the April 10th meeting?
I have a question.
Yes.
So is the intent, the necessary... Let me get the name right here.
Dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit is in a owner-occupied dwelling?
It is, by definition and under the criteria by which they're allowed. It has to be an owner-occupied unit.
What definition states that?
That is in the zoning ordinance.
I don't see that in there.
There is a definition that we've added. Do you have your zoning ordinance with you?
I do.
And it's also, I believe, in the... So I think that is right here, page six. You missed it.
No, I didn't miss it.
This is your new... Okay.
Where does it say owner-occupied?
It's in the text that says what the requirements are for the accessory dwelling unit. Okay. Do you want me to read the definition?
No. No, I was just... I didn't find owner-occupied, and I was just making sure it's there somewhere.
Yeah, it is. And let me just... So we... I actually do have that copy. I didn't bring my entire book today. That's the impact fee. Accessory sheds. Did I do... And this is fairly new, Bill. We added it last July... June. The state law said we had to have something replaced by June of 2018, 17.
I just looked at the definition and didn't see it in the definition, so I kind of stopped there.
Okay. Let's see if we can find it. You need to get little tabs that...
Well, I started. You can see that's covered.
So, this is what it says. Okay, one of the dwelling units must be owner-occupied. That's one of the criteria. And it's in for, if anyone else wants to do some research on it, it's under Section 32, 234, accessory apartments. Does that answer the question?
Question? So what if the proposed plans showed one bedroom, but then in addition to an office? And then the resident turned that office into a second bedroom after...
It has to be based on what is in the assessment card. But yeah, we're mindful of the fact that in some homes, the second bedroom is an office and...
No closet, but still utilized as a...
And that's okay. It's just... And then there's all kinds of discussion on how you discern between an office and a bedroom and whether it has a closet or not. But we just thought that we would keep it as simple as possible and just look at it in terms of, is it being expanded in existing space, number one, and number two? Is it adding the number of bedrooms? Because, again, that's what's driving the necessity for the impact fee. Good question. Any other questions?
Can you give us an history on the members that are not able to attend tonight as to whether this should be continued so they have a voice, or if they are...
Well, Val Sheldon was the one who proposed the language, and we actually polled the board members at the meeting when we were first discussing this and gave everybody the opportunity to get comments, and Val was the only one that came forward with something substantive. I believe it was at... Our chairman was at the meeting at the time, and I know that Jane Ford was in favor of the change. So I think for the most part, the board is supportive of it. I just, for the benefit of the new members, since this is new, I, you know, thought we should at least provide an opportunity to discuss whether you want to continue it or not, to give it a little more time to study it. It's up to you.
I'd like to make a motion if we forward this to the town council for review.
With consideration.
With consideration.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's really good, because we really beat this thing to death. That's really good because we really beat this thing to death. We moved on, we did, we went around and around and had little work sessions on it. I mean, it wasn't just a quick decision, it was a long haul.
We had been discussing it for several months. It wasn't just, it was probably the last four or five months that we really had a general discussion and agreement on it.
So have we been moved to the town council?
Yes. Well, that makes things easy.
Did you wanna go back to the?
Yeah. And I just, I wanted to provide that opportunity because I have been in discussions with Mr. Dionne. And his application that's currently before the planning board is one that might be a candidate for this new waiver provision. But it has to go through the town council. This is a zoning change and in Newmarket, zoning changes are made by the town council, but they're recommended by the planning board. So it's gonna be a couple of more months. They have a first reading and a second reading. So it probably won't be until May or June before Mr. Dionne could come back. But we've sort of given him the opportunity to, we've sort of held his sea of hope in, in a, in abeyance, if you will, until such time as, you know, we have an opportunity for the board to review it when the new language is in place. And we thought that was a fair approach.
For Jonathan Smith and Caitlin Smith?
Yes.
Because you said it was Mr. Dionne.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dionne is Ms. Smith's father, I believe.
Oh, no, okay.
And he's been sort of, yeah, and he's been sort of the spokesperson who's come to the board and whom I've talked with. But it's for his, the accessory apartment is for his daughter and son-in-law. And I believe his daughter Caitlin is a paraprofessional over at one of the schools either. I think it's the elementary school. So they're, you know, they've moved to Newmarket and, or they wanna move to Newmarket. And, you know, they're pretty much vested in the community, is what I understand.
Okay, so we're all set with them now.
Well, we wanna continue there.
Okay, so I need a motion for, to continue.
And we've been continuing it month to month.
Month to month, to continue Jonathan Smith and Caitlin Smith, plus Mr. Dionne. Continue the request for a wave of impact fees for an accessory apartment at Fourteen Woods Drive, tax map U one, lot one fifty, R two zone, for, then April?
April tenth.
Tenth meeting. Do I have a motion? So moved, thank you, do I have a second? Okay, Sarah's very quiet.
Sorry, I second that.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will package that and put it together for the town council's consideration, probably for a first reading in, where are we? Probably first reading in April, second reading later in April. Maybe they'll be ready to approve it by then.
Okay, and now we're gonna go to new and old business. There is a, excuse me, I believe Diane sent an email out today telling, informing people of the annual planning board conference for April twenty-eighth, which is a Saturday, which is up in Concord, New Hampshire.
Capone Center.
The Capone Center. And they do, they will pay, the town will reimburse you to go and for mileage too, I believe, correct?
For mileage and for the registration.
It's a very good workshop. If, I mean, you're, you're way.
No, it sounds right.
You are really knowledgeable, being in those, being in those fields. But it is very useful, even for people who are on the board to be refreshed. Not just for newcomers, but for newcomers, if you can make it, I think you'll benefit a lot from it. Or you'll get confused from it. Because they give a lot of information.
Did I say that? Need to get one over there. See how long it takes to handle it.
So if you need any information on it, Diane did send an email. I don't know if you looked at your emails yet today. But contact Diane so they can get the application for you.
Yeah, and it might be, you know, if a couple of people are going, you may want a carpool or whatever, whatever's gonna work, work out for you. But they're usually very well-attended and they're good session.
Do you know what the topics are, I guess?
Actually, I do. What did I do with it? I copied it. Here we go. Okay. Here's one of the sessions. Help, I've just joined a local land use board. What should I do now? Introduction to local land use boards in New Hampshire. And it's being led by Jennifer Seid, who's with the National Regional Planning Commission. Also, one of the new planners at the Office of Energy, excuse me, the Office of Strategic Initiatives, and a planning board chairman from Friedman, New Hampshire. There's a session on agricultural toolkit, which I'm not sure how applicable that is to Newmarket, but that's available. There's a session put on, on planning board basics. And it's put on by Steve Buckley, who's an attorney with the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And I worked with Steve when I was in Merrimack. He was the town's legal counsel there. So he's very knowledgeable and he's a good speaker. He would give a good overview of the role for planning board members. Then there's a session on Bristol Reborn. And Bristol, New Hampshire has done, I guess, an excellent job with their redevelopment of Central Square. And they've used a lot of different funding sources available through the state. And there's an overview of their redevelopment process. There's a session on what's new in historic preservation. And there's a session on ZBA, decision-making, which probably wouldn't be applicable to this group. But it's being put on by Christine Fillmore, who also used to work at the Local Government Center, the municipal association, and very good speaker. And then they have concurrent sessions in the afternoon. And one of them is the roles and responsibilities of the planning board, which sounds like one that you might wanna attend. And Chris Parker, who's the planner over in Dover, is leading that. And Sarah Marchand, who's with the City of Nashua, will be one of the speakers. And, oh, there's more, all kinds of goodies here. There's gonna be.
You don't have to go through them all.
Okay, so there's a, let me, a legal update from Ben Frost. I don't know if you guys know Ben. Do you know Ben? Okay. And the right to know law. And there's a session on becoming age-friendly in Southern New Hampshire, which I think is something that I might be interested in with the work that's going on at EDC. And then there's a session on conflict of interest. And here's your session, Bill, accessory dwelling units, lessons from the field. And the last one is a presentation from Plan New Hampshire. And they, that's the group in New Hampshire that does design sherrets and helps communities with visioning and trying to get people organized for downtown redevelopment. So it's sort of, it's a wide range of topics, but there's, I think there's something there for everyone, depending upon your interests. And I would, would recommend it because they're very good.
So something, do you wanna get in there?
Thank you.
Contact Sue, right?
Yeah, or you can actually, you can sign up yourselves and, you know, we put in for reimbursement and that, we can process it that way. It doesn't matter if that's convenient for you or if you, we can do a check request. So, you know, just, and that's coming right up. That's in April, the end of April. It's on a Saturday, so. And I'd be happy to share my program with anyone who'd like one. No? Okay.
Did it come out, was the program on the email?
Yes.
The PDF, so you can download it and look at it?
Yes, yes, there's a link to the, to the website. Thanks, Diane.
You're welcome.
My pleasure. Okay, how are we doing on our agenda here?
I'm on the stormwater committee. What did Diane fill in on that one?
Yeah.
I haven't.
We had an excellent workshop at the meeting in February on the new stormwater regulations. There are a lot of really good questions raised. And I've gone back and I've addressed several of them. And I, after talking with Valerie, actually, it was, she was our liaison in that committee. It was thought that maybe it would be best if we referred this back to the subcommittee to do some fine-tuning of the ordinance. And also, there's interest in having some representation from the development community, attend the work sessions and the, to provide input from the developers and their engineers' point of view. And I had actually talked to Eric Ginberg and he agreed to provide some input to us. And I think that's helpful because it gives us a reading on how, you know, the development community will view this. And, you know, are we going down the right path? Is this too restrictive or, you know, is it going to preclude redevelopment in the downtown? So we might be able to get another perspective that would be helpful. So at this point, the two people who were on the previous stormwater committee are no longer with us, Peter Nelson and Roseanne. So if there's anyone who's interested in participating in that capacity, I know Gretchen has attended as well. And I, I didn't mention you because I'm not sure what's gonna happen with your, you have your election coming up with the council, your organizational meeting.
Right.
But, you know, we are looking for volunteers, if there's anybody who would like to participate in that. I know that Diane is interested from an engineering perspective because they're dealing with the same issue in Exeter where he works. But yeah, we're looking for volunteers and we'd like to reactivate that committee if we could. So you wanna talk about it the next meeting?
Sure. I would be interested, actually.
You would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Diane, looks like he's interested.
Well, to talk about it.
Oh, to talk about it, and to come to the meetings?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Gretchen, of course. And Bill, you know, you're welcome. What we try to do at a subcommittee level is have, anytime we have a quorum, then that constitutes a meeting. And we have to follow protocols for notification of the public and have minutes and so forth. So we have, as a sort of a tradition, we've had smaller subcommittees limited to three members so that we don't have to, you know, provide that extra administrative support to the group. And it seems to have worked out well. So, anyway, we can talk more about it, but Mikal and Diane?
Yeah.
Okay, are interested, anyone else? And Gretchen, if you're gonna be up. I'm not sure what's gonna happen with your organizational meeting, but I hope you can join us.
I'll let you know after.
Okay.
How's that?
And that's gonna be next?
Next point.
Next Tuesday? Next Wednesday, your meeting?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay. So you wanna talk about that?
Oh, okay. On April tenth, we're gonna have the organizational meeting and election of officers. So keep that in mind, so hopefully you'll all be able to attend. And if you're not here, sometimes Eric or whoever's the chair will just, could appoint you to a committee. It's happened in the past.
He's known to do that.
He's known to do that. So if he gets to be chair, thank you, Eric, you will, could be appointed. But sometimes it's not bad to come without some information of a committee that you'll be interested in. There's a conservation committee, we appoint someone to. There's a budget committee, that's.
Capital improvements.
Capital improvement, not budget committee, the capital improvements committee. What else is there?
There's Stratford Regional Planning Commission, but I did speak with Peter and he's interested in continuing with that for a while longer, Peter Nelson.
Does he have to be in, I don't know the rules.
We would, once a year, we get a letter from him and they ask for appointments. So, you know, we can hold off until, I think he's, he's been appointed until July.
Okay. I just, all the rules and all the regulations of that.
And let's see what else. There's also an Energy and Environment Committee? Gretchen, you're involved in that?
That's new. No, that's Council One Stein.
Okay, but I thought there was somebody, they were looking for planning board members at one point. I don't know if anybody volunteered, but that's another committee that might be available. I'm trying to think of the others. CIP.
Oh, yeah, DM Committee, is that, no?
No, that's not a planning.
I think we probably hit the major ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And we appreciate everyone's interest in their volunteer efforts.
And before we adjourn, I just wanna say thank you for the alternates. Now you realize how important you are. Really. I mean, I know some people just don't really wanna be acknowledged in the process. We've needed you, we needed members, and this has been great with your knowledge and experience. Thank you very much for stepping forward. I mean, also for the people to sign up. I mean, alternates is a very hard position to fill. So I'm very, when I saw the names, I was like, wow, this is fantastic for us. And now we go on to the most important item. And I'm gonna have to have someone adjourn our meeting. Oh, wait a minute, just let me step back one minute, please. Diane, do you have any?
Did I have anything for you? There was one thing that I was just thinking of a minute ago. I'm sorry.
Sometimes she has.
It's faced me. It was something I was gonna ask before. Oh, I just wanted to say for the new members, there you go, for the new members, Sue Jordan has put together a huge packet of information that includes the state RSA's and all the town zoning ordinances and minutes of the meetings. And there's some handbooks that she's included. And I know it's sort of a, kind of an overwhelming process going through all that stuff. And I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with any of the new members and go over if there's any questions you have and kind of give you sort of an overview of what we do and what our process is and why we do what we do. And, you know, try to give you some perspective. And anytime you have questions about anything on the agenda, feel free to give us a call. And between Sue and myself, we can, you know, hopefully get you the information we need. And I know it is kind of overwhelming, but eventually we'll all come together and we'll click for you. So I just wanted to extend that invitation to our new people.
Thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome.
So do I have a motion to adjourn? So we're making a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a. Don't be shy now.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have, all those have, we're gonna, motion, we have a second, we're gonna vote on it and we're gonna have a time. And the, we're gonna have our meeting on the April tenth, just as a reminder. Because we have the, and at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. We always start at seven, less as a workshop. Sometimes we have them before we hit, but at seven. So we had a first and we had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for volunteering.
So we, adjourn is seven forty-five.
Oh, well, we can't tell by the clock.